Flag and I just walk you through the process, then we will. Thank you so much. I have a couple of computers down, so give me a minute. And we're almost at six fifty-nine. And rising. We're getting to seven o'clock soon. Okay. Welcome, everybody. This meeting is called to order at seven P M on this, the ninth day of December in the year of two thousand and twenty. At this time, let us all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to move on to agenda item two point one. Consider discussing vote to appoint the school committee chair. Will someone make a motion?
I'd make a motion. I would recommend Patrick McHugh. I'll second that.
Do you like to take it? Is this where we take a vote? Are there any more nominations?
Laura, you may want to ask if there is any discussion that the committee would like to have.
Thank you. It's been two years since I've done this. Would anyone like to discuss? The item at hand?
I'd just like to thank Patrick for his dedication and service as the chair over the last few years. And, you know, delighted that he'd be willing to take this on again.
Thank you, Rita. It means a lot coming from you. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Those in favor? Say on.
By a roll call?
Yes, by a roll call.
Polly Allen?
Hi.
Rita Kenahan?
Hi.
Mike Rocha?
Hi.
Hannah Ayat?
Hi.
Patrick McHugh?
Hi. Thank you.
Now I hand over the two-page agenda to Chairperson Patrick McHugh.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have two point two. Consider discussing vote to appoint a school committee vice chair. I'm going to make a motion to nominate Polly Allen. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have any discussion? Not seeing any discussion. A roll call, please, Marianne.
Polly Allen? Rita Kenahan?
Hi.
Mike Rocha?
Hi.
Hannah Ayat?
Hi.
Patrick McHugh?
Hi. Thank you. Congratulations, Polly. At two point three, consider discussing vote to appoint a school committee secretary. Do you have a motion?
I'd make a motion to nominate Rita Kenahan.
I'll second that motion. Discussion? Not seeing any roll call, please.
Polly Allen?
Hi.
Rita Kenahan?
Hi.
Mike Rocha?
Hi.
Hannah Ayat?
Hi.
Patrick McHugh?
Hi. Okay, that takes care of our appointments. I'd just like to officially recognize Hannah Ayat and Michael Rocha. I welcome you guys to the committee and really look forward to your input. I know you've been to a few school committee meetings before, so you know how this rolls. So, really happy you guys are here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, three point one. The chairman has to appoint the subcommittees. I'm going to do that now. Three one contract negotiation subcommittee. I'm going to appoint myself and Rita Kenahan. Are you going to write this down, Marianne? You want me to go slower or is that fast enough for you?
That's a perfect speed. Thank you.
Speed, okay. Three point two, high school contract negotiation subcommittee, myself and Michael Rocha. Three point three, Little Compton Teach Association Sick Bank Committee member, Polly Allen and Hannah Ayat. And three point four, Policy Subcommittee, Polly Allen, Hannah Ayat, Michael Gabriel. Jonathan Gabriel, I'm sorry. I wrote Mike, you know. You know why I called you that, right? I told you a long time ago. I have a very good friend named Michael Gabriel, people. So, and I consider Jonathan a good friend now, so there you go. I wrote Mike, too. Three point five, Portsmouth School Committee Liaison, Rita Kenahan. Three point six, Town Recreation Committee Liaison, myself. I was supposed to say myself or my name? I don't know, so. You can, whatever. Three point seven, Safety Subcommittee, Polly Allen, Mike Rocha. Three point eight, Scholarship Subcommittee, myself, Rita Kenahan. Health and Wellness Subcommittee Chair, Rita Kenahan. And if anyone follows school committee meetings, this one in Little Compton, you notice that Oasis is left off of this, as is the S E L. They are not school committee. They're not subcommittees of the school committee. So, those subcommittees, the school, or this school committee can request any updates at any time from the Oasis or the S E L, Social Emotional Learning. Any questions on any of that?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, four, Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda. Anyone want to pull anything out of the consent agenda?
Patrick, I'd like to call four point four, please.
Four point four, Enrollment. Okay. All right, you've just pulled it out. What would you like to talk about?
I just want to know, the numbers that we have is, does that include remote learning? Is that everybody? Or is that that's in-school, remote learning, in-town, out-of-town?
Yes, yes, yep. And we did have some students drop from our enrollment for homeschooling. We had an uptick in that, but that is an accurate number. And that, that is our distance learners who are registered, our in-person, and our tuition students.
Okay. On the tuition students, once they reach eighth grade, are they, they're no longer tuition students at our school, but are they still considered a student for the high school?
Absolutely not.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
I'll take a motion, accept a motion to accept the consent agenda. Do I have one?
I have a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Not seeing any roll call vote, please.
Polly Allen? Hi.
Rita Kenahan?
Hi.
Mike Rocha?
Hi.
Hannah Ayat?
Hi.
Patrick McHugh?
Hi. Passage names, thanks. Five Spotlight, Spotlight on English Language Arts Personal Narrative, Jean Ray. We have our principal here, I think.
Yes, she is. Take this course. Yep, it's all Sonia's.
And I want to say welcome to Hannah and Mike, so welcome to our school committee. I'm very proud of the work that's going on at Wilbur McMahon. When asked for a spotlight for this month, one of the things that had crossed my path was some work that the second grade and the fifth grade was doing on personal narratives. And both the second grade and the fifth grade chose to have the kids read their personal narratives and put them into a flipgrid format. Flipgrid is a program where short video clips can be made and then pieced together into a bigger product. So, what I have is a sample of a second-grade personal narrative and a fifth-grade personal narrative. It's a short video. It's about five minutes long. And then at, at the conclusion of the video, I have Marjorie Leary, who I'm going to ask that you pull her over to this side. And she's going to read you a narrative that she wrote comparing and contrasting her experience as an in-person learner and as a distance learner. She was a distance learner for the first quarter of the school year, and then she came back to full in-person learning. So she is one of our sixth-grade students, and I'm going to let you talk to her a little bit. We're going to start with the video of the second grade and the fifth grade narrative. The second-grade student is Anna Burchard. She's, she's a second grader in Gabby Sullivan's class. And then the second video, which will come right up afterwards, is Kyle Martin. He's a fifth-grade student. So we'll watch those, and then I'll, I'll introduce Marjorie to you.
Thank you, Principal. You just reminded me, if anyone in the audience has a question, you don't have to wait for public input. Just raise your hand. We'll notice you there, and I will call on them. Thank you.
And welcome to my storytime. Today I'm going to be reading My Trip to Disney World. I wrote this myself. The author is Anna Burchard. My aunt surprised me with a trip to Disney World. It was the best Christmas of my life. It was my first time going on a plane. It was really fun. First, we had to go to Georgia. And then we drove to Disney World. It was so much fun. I was scared for all of the Star Wars rides, but I ended up loving them all. So today I did, I did tell you in person, I did read My Trip to Disney World. And I'm going to show you the pictures now. Okay. Right here, it's kind of really hard to see, but right here with this box, it's my family. And my aunt is somewhere right there. And she was telling me. And then that's insecurity, which, and there was a map behind us. And this is my, um, sorry, the waiting room where we waited in, and then we went on the plane. And it was really nice having you guys here, so, um, come back next time for Anna's reading. The surprise. Beep beep. My grandmother's car was pulling in our driveway. She beeped as she pulled in the driveway. My sister and I, who were watching television, looked outside the window to see our grandmother's car. Her light shined into the glass door like the sun. Behind us, our mother was smiling. Why is she here? I'm happy, but she never told us that she would be coming here, my sister yelled. Hello, Grandma, my sister said gladly. Hi, Caitlin, she replies, sounding already suspicious. Then she entered our house smiling ear to ear. I felt like I haven't seen her in a year. That's how much, much I missed her. I looked behind me to see my mother. She laughed very quietly and smiled, too. My sister and I both noticed the box she was holding. I see holes in the box, too. What's that, I even, I asked, eagerly tapping my feet and smiling. Nothing, my grandmother replied. At first, I thought it was some sort of toy for us to. I knew something was going on, so did my sister. Both smiled and looked at each other. After, she placed the box on the floor and laughs. So, what's been happening, she asked. Not much, my mother replies quickly. Hi, Kyle. Hi, Caitlin, she said. Where's Ryan? Down in his room, Caitlin replied. Can you get him? Sure, I said. My sister and I run down to get our brother. Hi, Ryan, she, my grandmother says. Hi, Ryan replied. I have a surprise. Okay, we all said together. Sit down and you can open the box, my mother says. Then we all sit down. I open the box and we see a dog. She hops out of the box and runs towards my sister. She's so cute, we all yell. First, she jumps into my sister's lap and then runs towards me and Ryan. Hi, we yell. We pull out the blanket in her box and she lays down and flips over and then runs around the house. Then she comes back and lays down right next to me. She felt like a cloud. We all pet her. Aw, I say. We all yell. Thank you. You are very welcome, my mother says. I knew you guys would love her. I do, too. I get up and she jumps on my legs. Look, she's dancing with me, we all laughed. I pick her up and hold her. She lips my face. She's as sweet as candy. I should go now, my grandmother said. We went over to say goodbye. Thank you, I say. Don't thank me. I just brought her. Thank you, Mother. She got her. I just brought her over for her. She replies. Well then, thank you for bringing her over. She leaves, we thank our mother and play with our new dog. Days after we got her, we named her Lily. Still, to this day, our family has her. Even now, four years later, I am still extremely happy that we got her. She's the sweetest dog and we all love her very, very much.
Hmm. In one sec, let's just bring Marjorie in here.
And what I really love about those two videos is that you really see the development of a genre from a second grader to a fifth grader. And if you can have Marjorie.
Hi, Marjorie.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Are you in high school now?
No.
What grade are you in now?
I'm in sixth grade.
Oh, my God, sorry. Wow.
Get that a lot.
Bye, bye.
So, as I said before, she, Marjorie was home for the first quarter, and then the beginning of second quarter, she came back to in-person learning. She was looking for a challenge, so she had talked to Mrs. Kiernan, who's her mentor for part of our, one of our programs. And she suggested that she write a narrative comparing being an at-home learner and an in-person learner. So, I'm going to let Marjorie take it away and talk to, read you her essay.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I wrote this. Ms. Kiernan knew I liked writing, so she told me, she asked me if I would like to write something like a compare and contrast piece. And so I wrote a compare and contrast of virtual learning and in-person learning. Waking up minutes before class starts, wearing a blouse on top and sweatpants on bottom, scrambling to find a charger when your screen, your lifeline, your connection goes black. And oh, the anger, the terror when the Wi-Fi goes out. You'd think the world had ended. Every morning, thousands of kids and teens perform this new normal. No, not the dress-wear faux pas, dead computers, alarms failing to go off, or losing internet. They're signing into class on a computer from their home. From an online learner's perspective, school tasks can be easy or difficult, depending on who you are and how you learn. For me, I found it undemanding and simple, but for some lack of supplies, instructions, or simply a proper school environment was their downfall this autumn. Personally, I loved it. I could stay in my BJs, lounge on my yoga ball, any, whenever I wanted to, without the hassle of a mask and the looming prospect of COVID. Unfortunately, it was a little too uneventful. Virtual learning was tough at times when I didn't have the resources I needed to complete the tasks I was given, or instructions were too vague, and I ended up nervously browsing Google Classroom for the correct document. Nevertheless, I enjoyed it all the same. Grabbing a quick lunch break and sitting back down on the computer to sign in for ELA was life for me. It was my own little world on that screen, and I didn't realize how special this was until after I had left the safety and comfort of my room and desk at home. Virtual learning was something that was becoming a norm, but also a solution to problems like snow days and COVID outbreaks. That was the first quarter. That was my first time signing in on a computer to sixth grade. But the second quarter came in November, and I was sent to school in an environment I hoped held no lurking virus that I couldn't see, but desperately wished I wouldn't catch. Day one was interesting. I floated around with a mask on my face and hand sanitizer nestled safely in my bag. Along with the Chromebook, folders, and binders and other on- and ends, the bag was getting exceptionally heavy. I got the information I needed from friends and marvelled at how the instructions were so easy. The papers were right at my desk, delivered from my own teacher's hand. On Friday, I was genuinely looking forward to the weekend, an emotion that had been dampened during my virtual learning period. When you're at home all day, every day, the days blended to weeks, and weeks blended to a stretch of time unbroken with off dates. I still anticipated weekends, but not in the way I do now at school in person. I was looking forward to Thanksgiving break. Remembered five days that were like a vacation, five days that were devoted to family and happiness, food, all the food. Coming home from school was extremely gratifying. On virtual learning days, I was cranky and tired afterwards, my eyes drooping from staring at a screen for too long. But when I came back from Wilbur, I felt happy and relieved to be in the safety of my house, warm and familiar. On the weekend, I relaxed and did my homework. It was mostly on my computer, and because I did virtual learning for a bit, I knew my way around the different sites and tools, perks of going to school on a laptop. Some days, I remember what it was like virtual learning, and I can't imagine going back. The monotony of learning at home seemed unthinkable after I had experienced once again the eventful occurrences at school. Seeing classrooms and enlarged teachers' faces on the screen at home, or walking down the glistening hallways with the buzz of my friends all around me at school, lounging in my bed, or sitting with a school-listening look posture in my classroom chair, writing with a pencil on an actual piece of paper, or typing on a Google document. Virtual learning and in-person learning are so different from each other, yet they both represent a much bigger picture. A picture is worth of thousands of words, they say, but since I only have a keyboard, I'll do my best to describe it. Whether it's on a computer or in a classroom, school has been a tradition that every young boy, girl, or person should attend. Learning knowledge that will aid them in their future. We have found ways to adapt to COVID, and virtual learning is one of these solutions. I have been extremely fortunate to even have a school to go to. How I merely go there is an expansion of my palette, a new adventure that has taught me more than just fractions and grammar, more than just the ABCs and one-two-threes. It's a journey that has given me patience, experience, and exposure. Though they are so different, virtual learning and in-person learning are things that have taught me similar lessons that will aid me and the world and in my mind. Being at school or at home, I have come so far, and I'm ready for whatever school, wherever it may be, has in store for me.
Excellent job, Marjorie.
So good, so good.
And I don't know if any of you have any questions for Marjorie, because I, that's kind of a unique perspective of how things have been for the past few months.
Absolutely.
Patrick?
Yes, go ahead.
That was excellent. I really loved it. I was wondering if anyone had given any thought to, of, of course, with Marjorie's permission, seeing if maybe the Historical Society would consider holding on to this, because this, I'm sure this will be very important information many years from now, when we're looking back at this in our history books, and to have a firsthand account from a student who had experienced both sides of this, I would think would be very interesting and valuable.
Thank you.
We can certainly reach out. That's a great idea. And I'm also going to share the essay with parents and my weekly update on Sunday, so that the whole school community can, can read it, too. So if they're not here tonight, they'll be able to read Marjorie's piece.
Thank you. That's wonderful.
Marjorie, I have a very important question for you.
Yes.
That ties into your essay. So when you have lunch at school, when you're in school, and they deliver the lunch to you, what do they deliver the lunch on?
Well, since we aren't, the cafeteria isn't in use right now. They are using, for the hot meals or the cold meals, they are using like foil containers.
Like.
Plastic bags to hold the snack items.
So there are no Styrofoam trays being used? Is that, was that, is that right?
Yeah. Also, and also no sugar-based trays either, right? Isn't that what you're looking for? So, maybe after COVID.
But working for us right now.
See, all these things, you're just getting, getting done, checking off at a young age. It's pretty good. You got a bright future ahead of you, that's for sure. Mary Elizabeth Miller has her hand raised. Is, can you, can we bring Mary Elizabeth Miller in? I think she might have something to add.
You're muted.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to say Jenna Magnuski from the Historical Society is actually looking for pieces. To speak to Polly's question from students, we had some eighth graders who wrote some pieces for her. So I will reach out to Jenna, but they discovered during this, they have nothing from the nineteen eighteen flu. And they're trying to build some artifacts from this pandemic, so that would be fabulous if we could reach out with that.
That's great. Thanks, Mary Elizabeth. I just want to tell Marjorie what an outstanding job you did with that essay. It's truly remarkable, and I'm glad it's going to be shared with parents and families, other students. But sadly, they'll have to read it, and they won't get to see you and hear your expressive, delightful way of telling your great story, but tremendous work, Marjorie.
Thank you so much. I'm so glad I could read it here.
Absolutely. Thanks, Marjorie.
So proud of you, Marjorie.
Thank you so much.
I just want to give a big shout out also to the English teachers who have, who have brought our students along. So Cheryl Cumley, who is Marjorie's teacher now. Then we have Kristin Monas in fifth grade, Stephanie Costello in fourth grade, Erin Bowley in third grade, Gabby Sullivan and Jen Moorash in second grade, Kathy Agar in first grade, Mary Anne Vareka and Jen Segala started all off in kindergarten, and we ended up at Wilbur with Mike Tomaso in, in eighth grade, so just wouldn't, you know, they're, they also help this process along and are very instrumental in what our students do.
And thanks for sharing those videos. It was the best Christmas present yet.
So true.
So I, I would be remiss if I didn't mention to you, Marjorie, that we have a new school committee member, Hannah Ayat, who sat in your seat not a long time ago in probably Mrs. Cumley's class, I, I'm guessing. And she has a four-point O, if I recall. And so it looks like you guys are, have some things in common.
Yeah.
Is that about right, Hannah?
Yes, Mrs. Cumley was my social studies teacher when I was there, though. But I experienced the same type of learning struggles and joys that you did when I finished up college at the beginning of this year, when it all started, so I totally understand where you're coming from, and I wish you luck with whatever the next step, whether it's distance or in-person, you have going on. You seem very smart and bright and capable, and I'm excited to see where you go.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I'm excited to where it will take me.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Whip, are you done with the spotlight?
I am. Thank you so much for listening to our students.
You got it. Thanks, Marjorie. And, and Anna and Kyle, with a sweet dog and Disney World. Best time of her life. That was cool. All right. So we'll go on to six, Superintendent Report, six point one, Update on a Wilbur Command School, twenty twenty twenty-one Hybrid School Year.
Yes, if you look at the website, I've changed that particular channel on the website from reopening to twenty twenty twenty-one Hybrid School Year, because that's what we're in right now. We're past reopening. We're full bore into our hybrid school year. So Marjorie was one of our home learners. She was one of our distance learners. Term one, we had eighty-three percent of our students in person, seventeen percent were in distance learning. Term two-
Term two, all families had the opportunity to choose a different option or, stick with the modality that they started with during first term. But we did see some changes. Marjorie came back as she admitted. And so we went from 83% in person, first term, second term, we're, we, we are up to 88% in person with 12% um, distance learning. So things are going very well in spite of, um, this second surge. The second surge keeps us definitely hypervigilant regarding, um, the numbers out there. I can honestly say that I and other members of the building admin team and support staff team, we are looking at data daily, daily. Every day we are waiting for results, regarding testing. And so we're well beyond, we're between 40 and 50 people who've been tested in our school community. We've had one member of our school community proper, who had COVID and our well wishes and thoughts with this particular individual. And then we had two members of our sort of ancillary, um, layer of our school community. They're not in any of our dashboards per se, but they are valued members, outside vendors and at-will employee. So, we're doing well. Uh, last week we have scare. There were five cases which took our numbers, from zero to 143 per 100,000, because if you take the 3,500 year-round, citizens and you, you know, divide that, you know, into 100,000, you get your quotient, you know, you have to do the toll. So we, you know, moved through that. I did share all that information on social media. And then, so we were with our state dashboard. We were green lights everywhere within that metric except, municipal readiness. So last week we went from all green lights and we had one yellow light caution, proceed with caution in the community, in the school. This week that was basically reversed. The little town, little town, little Compton Town community, had less than five cases. And so we're back with green lights. If you go to, the, um, former reopening channel on our site and select the new channel, um, 2021, hybrid school year, you will see all of those documents that I update as often as possible. Hound COVID-19 case data and also the LCSD Willa McMahon COVID-19 case dashboard. So we're always updating those numbers. And so their ready reference, we're doing quite well. That said, on Friday, the Department of Ed did reach out to all superintendents and told us that within the next week, we would have to complete a very long survey. I counted Jonathan Gabriel, our IT director, sat with me. We, completed the survey yesterday and it is over 10 pages long. And it's all about distance learning readiness and being ready to pivot, uh, at a moment's notice from in-person to distance learning. And I can say we've, we've passed, um, all of, you know, all of those, we've met all the criteria, you know, with, um, regard to planning, standardization, technology, um, and support. So it was, I'll definitely share it with the school committee on Friday night and you'll have it, um, in the memo. So we've had a really good school year in the middle of this pandemic and the second surge, you know, did mess with some of our metrics last week, but I think we're in a really good place right now. Of course, that could change on a dime. We did receive 21 medical grade air purifiers from EDOC, the Educational Operations Center that the governor, um, the multi-agency, EDOC that the governor did set up during the pandemic to support schools. And I have asked for six more and I hope we get those and it depends on anything left over. So fingers crossed that we'll end up with 27. They retail for about 850 bucks a piece, so that saved us a lot of money. And I want to thank, both of our custodians, Chris Osborne Jr., Chris Osborne Sr. for, um, driving up to Cranston, picking those up. You know, it was several hundred pounds of, inventory and they did a great job. And then they uncrated them and deployed them beautifully. We made packets for teachers, uh, because they're pretty sophisticated. And so now with the air purifiers in, we have the HEPA, um, purification with our MERV 13 filtering and, uh, we're, you know, I think we're, you know, we're really in a good place and we, teachers don't have to keep their windows open. We've kept the tents for the month of December based on the temperate weather that we experienced in November. They were supposed to be, you know, I contracted until the end of, uh, uh, November with ABC tent. The principal and other, um, staff members did ask if we could keep them until the end of December. So we, we thought that the weather would, you know, stay so temperate and beautiful and that hasn't been the case. But I took a gamble, what can I say? And we still have two tents up. The smaller tent is, um, away from our campus right now. It may come back in the spring. But we needed to, um, get that removed so that we could finish, phase one and two of the repaving of the back lot, which came out really great. And the, uh, final layer will be laid in, uh, the spring, when there's more time to cure, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, we've had a couple of silver linings through this, um, pandemic. One is our school-based data, which is great. The town-based data is great. The weather has been glorious. And it really has us, um, reprioritizing. And so that back lot probably for the past few decades needed attention and it finally did get it. So we're, we're in a good place, but like I said, it really could change on a dime. Our mitigation efforts have worked. There has been no school-based or transportation-based spread. One wrench in the works has been our dismissal with, uh, the number of cars doubling. End of the, end of the day for dismissal, we, you know, we did get, um, a few days where there were some log jams. There were situations that we needed to, provide more oversight, uh, on the commons, et cetera. And so we worked with Chief Rains and some of the officers. And we came up with a really good plan and the past few days, things have been much better. If you remember in a typical school year, more kids are taking the bus. Um, and we have, you know, right now, more kids are being driven to and from school. Also, in a typical school year, dismissal is staggered. Many kids stay after school. They, for library, for sports, for clubs. And so that dismissal of 215 kids is staggered over the course of two or sometimes even three hours. This is all at once, right there on a state road. And so that's not a silver lining, you know, finding out that we don't have, you know, the space to stage, uh, a full car SUV line of dismissals. And so we've had to put staff out there, we convene things, take our walkers, our kids who are walkers, hold them until the buses leave. So it's, it's been, the past few weeks has been, um, have been a little bit confusing after school and we're fixing that. And I need to cha, you know, definitely thank Chief Rains for his help. And he's been incredibly cooperative. When we get back from, from the holiday break, I don't know how long that will be. Everyone's anxious to hear from the governor tomorrow. We may look to move to a drive-through dismissal. If we continue with, you know, so much traffic at the end of every day, during the pandemic. So that would mean we would hold all of the cars, and I've discussed this with Chief Rains, all of the commons, maybe on to, it, you know, would be maybe even south of Commons or perhaps Willow. And then we'd let the buses leave and then people would drive through our staging area in the front of the building, our pick-up and drop-off. It's just a pipe dream right now, but at least we would have, absolute total agency over the kids until they get into a car. So, um, we're always looking to tweak, improve and the pandemic has definitely made us, use muscles that we never knew we had and, um, or that we haven't used in a long time. And dismissal on the commons is, is, is one of them. That, you know, it was working okay and then it hit critical mass with kids literally running away from their parents, running in front of cars. One even, you know, was in front of a police cruiser. So, um, it's, it's a unique school. It's so precious, but it is right there on a state road. And the crosswalk was sort of an afterthought, you know, for, um, a few weeks there during dismissal. So we really had to tighten that up. Other than that, um, it's, it's been smooth sailing and like I said, it could change on a dime, but the kids are happy. Our teachers are happy and healthy. You know, we have a few people quarantining right now based on, uh, their exposure at home. But, um, as I said, we've had one positive case and in the school proper and two on the periphery, but still attached to the school. So absolutely count those. And I think we all acknowledge that we are definitely privileged to have a school in a rural community during this pandemic and where the citizens seem to be acting incredibly responsibly, making great choices. We all know we're in this together and I can't say more about the spirit of collaboration, cooperation that I've seen in the town and in the school.
Did you say can't say more?
I can't say more. I mean, it's, it's a unique community.
It is. Um, 62, human resources update.
Oh, but can I, can I just?
Go ahead.
Oh, wait, am I still muted? No. So I would like to congratulate the administration, our teachers, our students, our custodial staff for being so lucky. And I think lucky is a key word here that we have had only one case within the school. I'm watching the news as I'm hoping everybody else is and Rhode Island is not only the worst state in the country, but the world. I mean, we have the worst numbers in the world. And I also saw that our teachers' union has, um, sent a letter requesting that schools go virtual as of Friday and don't return until, I'm unclear if it's the fourth or the 11th. I've heard both, um, after the new year. Um, and I, I know that we've been lucky, but considering, um, what's going on in the state. I, I think that it's something that we should really consider. I hate to spring something on, on parents who have children that need daycare. I, I just need to put that out there. I worry about, um, not only our students, but our teachers, and other adults in the building, parents, grandparents. That's, that's what, I, I just wanted to put that out there because I, I think we should, um, take into consideration the letter from Mary and, um, consider.
Point taken. And, um, I did, on our social media page today, I did link to the, um, the Johns Hopkins site that has Rhode Island at the top of all 50 states and US territories in terms of testing per capita. So when you cast a very wide net, and Gina has cast the largest net in the country in terms of testing, you, you catch a lot more cases. And so, if we give context to those numbers, and I, I did put that on our Facebook page today. I'm always updating Facebook, Facebook. So Rhode Island is at the top of positive, you know, positivity rates, definitely. Statistically, and also has tested the most per capita in the nation. And by far, as a matter of fact, this, there's quite an arc to the data. And I, I just find what she's done laudable. And so when you test more, you, you, you do reveal more cases. That said, absolutely. I, I'll be on an 8:30 Zoom tomorrow with, um, a group of superintendents. We expect to hear, we usually get information early before the governor's, um, press conference. And if I do, the school committee knows they will get a heads up in an email. So point taken, Polly. And, um,
And I, I do know that we're testing more, but also, um, our hospital rate is through the roof. At very scary rates and that has nothing to do with the amount of testing we're doing. So.
Very critical case.
Where we are at a critical place right now.
Okay, 62, human resources update.
Human Resources has been super busy. Carolyn Cedric, I think, yep, I think she's there. She has held with, uh, the trust, several informational sessions and she has more coming up regarding, um, the, flexible spending account that is now part of our teacher's benefits package and also, information about the Vision Rider, et cetera. Also, she updates us constantly every day with wonderful offerings by All One Health, our employee assistance program. She and I are very proud to be the first superintendent and HR coordinator to bring an EAP and a robust one at that into, um, the school department. I, I think an employee assistance program is critical all the time, based on the stresses that are inherent to being an educator, but especially during a pandemic. So teachers have been, all staff members actually have been, um, able to access all sorts of fitness programs, mindfulness programming, uh, you name it. She and I have also been busy getting certified, um, by the Youth Restoration Project of Rhode, of Rhode Island. We trained with Trinise Holden, who also trained 100% of our, um, teaching staff and our support staff in restorative practices. We've been certified in the restorative workplace. And I believe we were the only two participants who never missed a class. And there were several classes, um, one, I think the day before Thanksgiving and we showed up, you know? And so we are also looking to get certified as trainers, where we could train, uh, superintendents and HR coordinators in other communities, um, in other districts. So we are researching that and we have made it clear to Trinise Holden that, we would like to pursue that and we're looking at grants to support, um, that we found the training to be absolutely incredible and, um, transformative i- in, in our own practice. And we've used pieces of it already. So we've been pretty busy, uh, during, Carolyn, would you like to add anything?
Hi Lori, thank you. Yet know just how grateful that I am for the opportunity that we had with the restorative workplace, uh, training. It really, really was, as Lori said, transformative and we're looking at opportunities to carry it further. It was so valuable and I think it would be valuable to our community. So, thank you.
Thank you ladies for 62. 63, Healthy Schools Coalition highlight on Wilbur Command Schools Open Circle and Choose Love Program. Oh, Lori was muted.
Patrick, did you do that? Mariah, um, please bring up the, thank you so much. Oh, was that Jonathan? Okay, that, that's fine. I, I expected it to come up sooner. That's okay.
There we go, sorry.
Thank you so much. Um, the Healthy Schools Coalition of Rhode Island, singled out our wonderful Willa McMahon Schools, um, SL programming and their school wellness spotlight. SL programming in their School Wellness Spotlight on their website and in their monthly newsletter. And it is just the most wonderful article, and it's such an honor. We are just so proud of what we have in place for our students in terms of social emotional learning. And if we have Mary Elizabeth Miller, is she on this? Bring her back because she was instrumental, she and Sonia, in getting the information to Karen Weatherill from the Coalition. So let's get her in. Mary Elizabeth Miller is absolutely referenced in the article. Karen Weatherill is part of our Wellness Committee, the District Wellness Committee that Janet Porter beautifully chaired for years. And now the reins have passed to Rita Kenahan. The work of the Wellness Committee is comprehensive, preschool, pre-K through grade eight, and also wraps in staff health and wellness as well. So Mary Elizabeth, would you like to talk a little bit about this wellness spotlight and how it came to be?
Sure. Thanks, Laurie. Karen had reached out to Sonia and myself to see if we would be willing to talk with her about what we're doing at Willoughby McMahon with both Open Circle and Choose Love. So we spent about 45 minutes chatting with her and explaining the continuum that we have in place from kindergarten right through eighth grade with our kids and what we've been able to do every year, but even more importantly this year, to support them and give them a place where we can check in with them, talk about how things are going, and give them some strategies to deal with, especially this year, I would say anxiety is probably the number one thing that we're seeing with kids in this COVID era. And we've been fortunate, Jay Ford and Noel Cannon, our PE and health teachers, have been able to be a little bit more involved this year as well with their schedules and providing some continuity from grade level to grade level and offering another layer of support for our kids. So between myself and them, we're able to support the classroom teachers with some extra support this year, which has been fabulous.
So Mary Elizabeth, real quick, you said that you you're seeing a lot of anxiety in the kids. So how does that manifest? Is that just that they're they're cooped up and they need to go outside and run around and play games? Or is it, does it go deeper than that?
For some of them, it's a tough environment. As great as it's gone in school, you know, they can't move around as much. They need to stay at their desks. So there isn't enough movement, even our middle school students, instead of them changing classes, the teachers are changing classes. So to keep our stable pods as stable as possible. So that's certainly a new challenge when you have an eighth grader who's at the same desk all day after having, you know, multiple years of changing classes and moving around throughout the building. And we also have some students who are anxious about getting sick or someone in their family. You know, see things on the news and so are reacting to that as well. So it's a combination of some of the changes in the school environment and also what's happening in their families or community.
Well, I'm glad you're there to address those issues. Anyone else?
Real quickly, I do thank the superintendent for this update. And again, I thank you and commend you for the transparency all the way through this extremely difficult time. Your commitment to health and wellness and keeping us, our students and staff, safe, and I trust, we trust that you will make the right decisions as we move forward through the rest of this pandemic. But thank you so much for your commitment.
It is my pleasure and honor to serve the community, especially right now.
I did that. A quick question, Laura, that's that is not as deep as that one. The wind with the tents, they're they're okay?
Wow.
But we had those two. Yeah. What happened to them, anything?
Nothing. We we've endured, what, four windstorms since they were installed? And so after the first, the first windstorm storm, I did call. I called ABC because, you know, we were worried. And they said, you know, we set these up very differently. We have impermanent, you know, for weddings and so forth, you know, in on the grounds of a home or whatever. So the impermanent method, and then the permanent method is literally ironclad. I didn't believe it, but it looks like it's been sunny, windless days since the end of August. Yes. Yep. So don't forget they're frame tents. And they pass all sorts of fire codes and temporary structure codes with the fire department, believe me. They inspected, they gave the specs beforehand. So, yeah, they've been used a lot.
Thank you for that. Okay, thanks Superintendent Mitchell. Seven, finance report, Mr. McNamie.
Thank you. I'd like to, certainly for the benefit of Mike and Hannah, just to go over the monthly report as I present it at the school, the school committee meeting. So if you could just refer to page three of the report. That gives you the summary of the financial operations over a four-year period. So the first three columns, you'll see 2018, 2019 are our audited numbers for those years. We have unaudited numbers for 2020. The audit has been completed. The financial statement shouldn't be issued. Most likely, they're due to the audit, a general before the end of December. So we're just waiting on the auditors to submit those. And then the last three columns deal with FY21. I show the budget, which was approved at the Financial Town Meeting. I show the year-to-date actual expenses that we have recorded in the general ledger. And that last column, which I think is probably the most important one, is the projection of where I believe that we're going to wind up at the end of the year. If you look on the left, the first column, the description of the revenues and the expenses, these are standard within the Department of Education. Right has, does use what they call the Uniform Chart of Accounts. You'll probably hear it referred to as UCOA. So these are all standard descriptions that all school districts use. So we're in a position where we can kind of compare ourselves with other districts. And so those captions are are standard. And pages four through eight on this report will give you the detail that make up the individual captions. So and for example, in the salary line item, you'll see all the components of salary, the regular teacher's salary, any professional development, substitute teachers, whatever, and that, and same with fringe benefits. We see the breakout between pension, medical, et cetera. So those are all broken out as as the re, at the end of the report. So you you're able to see that over a three-year historical with the with the current year budget, actual and the projection. And the first two pages are a navigator that I I appear every school committee for kind of an executive summary of of what the, what the, what's included in the projection. And that's usually what I I try to hit the details, the highlights at the school committee meeting. And as always, and and many school committees have have done this, is contact me, either email me, text me, call me. Although I wouldn't text and call me until next Wednesday because I left my phone at Town Hall, so. But you can email me and I'll, I can get back to you with any questions you might have on the on the financials. So just briefly, if you look at the projection on page three on the revenue side, we're showing a decrease of about $37,000 in revenue from budget. I I just heard this evening that the state has issued the revised budget for FY20, as, excuse me, FY21. As you know, that has not been passed. Legislature is looking at it now. What we did base the projection on was the state revenue from FY20. So what we received in FY20, which was 367,000. Again, that was about 36,000 less than what we should have got because the state supplanted that money with some ESER or COVID CARES Act money that we needed to spend on on pandemic expenditures. So they did short that out and they did give it to us in additional CARES funds. So I'm hopeful that we might be able to recoup about 36, 37,000 in the budget. I haven't had a chance to look at what they're presenting, so hopefully we're going to get back to where we should have been in the budget for FY21. That would give us a boost of about $37,000. The other area that I just wanted to go through, and we we finally did receive our tuition for Portsmouth High School. And the number of students that we have is 102, which is about 10 students less than what we budgeted. So we're going to be looking at a savings of about $129,000 in that particular line item. And of course, this is a year that we can really use those savings. We're probably going to see increases in areas like substitute teacher expenses with the increases in the in the use of substitute teachers. We are certainly seeing an increase in the amount of money that we're spending on sanitation and custodial supplies and PP and E. And the other areas that we constantly watch that could have an impact certainly are out-of-district tuitions for special education and and sometimes for CTE programs that we do have. Those seem to be close to budget at this point in time. We're not seeing any changes in the enrollment that we projected. So right now we are seeing a nice savings on the Portsmouth High School tuition. So at the end of the day, I'm looking at a projection that's kind of break even. I'm showing about $1,300 of of surplus, but that's that's pretty much a break even at this point. And again, it's early in the year. We've gone through about five months with three months of actual operations of the school. So we've still got a long way to go and but I'm hoping that we could, we could end the year as close to break even as we can.
If I may, I just want to point out that, just like Willoughby McMahon and every school, I think in the country, enrollment dropped for those high school kids and shifted to homeschooling. My office processes 100% of homeschool requests, and that includes our high schoolers' grades nine through 12. So we have seen an uptick at Willoughby McMahon and also among our high schoolers who generally go to Portsmouth High School. Seems like every week we're getting more requests for. So yes, there is savings. But that that could change, John, as some of those kids shift away from homeschool.
Thank you, John McNamie. And any questions for John? Not seeing any at this moment.
Mike has one, I believe.
Oh, we got a race. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead, Mike. Just unmute yourself. Good, Mike.
Thanks. I'm having some internet issues, unfortunately. So, John, part of your speech there, unfortunately, you froze up on me, so I missed part of it. So if I repeat myself, I'm sorry about that. So your break even mark, your $1,300 mark that you're looking at, that's taking into consideration the savings as of this time for the Portsmouth and the special education. That's what, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah. So it's it's kind of an estimate of where we hope to end the year and at this point in time.
Okay. And you're thinking that you're going to get about 36,000-ish approximately back in addition to that 1,300 estimated as of right now, based on the potential.
I'm hoping. I'm hoping. Right now, it it appears that they're trying to shore the budget up with some additional CARES money. So if they do that, and they guarantee that we'll have the state aid that we said we were going to have, we should have some additional 37,000 in revenue.
Okay. All right. That's good for right now. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, thank you. Eight, committee reports. Sports and School Committee Liaison Report, Rita.
Yes, we had a meeting on November 17. The last one. Changes in some personnel. There was a lot of discussion about, you know, how they're handling things with COVID. Seem to have a pretty decent handle on things. Talked quite a bit about advanced placement classes, some significant growth in more students taking AP classes and actually having better results in those classes. And they also talked about the PSATs, how many students took them and the SAT. So these tests are still ongoing despite, you know, the problems with the pandemic. So and they were quite pleased with some of the scores in reading and writing. Not as impressed with the math scores, but still, they have feel that they have made some progress over the last couple of years in those scores. And more to come at on that at the next meeting.
Thank you, Rita. Appreciate it. Eight, two, Town Rec Committee Liaison Report. There's nothing going on at this moment. Discussion, nine, one.
Right, excuse me, I have a question about
Yes.
Um, has there been any discussion about lighting for the tennis courts?
Oh, God, you know, probably about 50 years of discussion about it. So what you would need to do is 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 get, you know, a plan together and get it through the Rec Committee and get it to the Town Council for approval. So no one's been able to do that yet. You know, we've got lighting on the basketball court, and I was involved in that, and that was very hard to do. You know, they restricted the lights. They positioned the lights only so far, the wattage. There's a lot of people in this town that have a lighting issue. They don't like lights coming in their windows. They don't, I say, put a blind up, but, you know, who am I to say? But, yeah, so it's it's a good question.
So we can put in a request for that then to the Town Recreation Committee?
Yeah, you know, what you would do is, you know, the town, the Recreation Committee, what they do is they recommend to the Town Council, so we can't allocate money for lights. We can advocate for lights, and they'll say, well, what's the plan? Did you have it engineered? How much does it cost? Where are we going to get that money? Are you going to have a fundraiser for it? That's what I've been used to for the past, you know, 12, 15 years that I've been on the Recreation Committee. So that's a big endeavor. But it it's going to take people, if people want to do that, you're going to have to get a group of people that make noise about it, that show up at Town Council meetings and say, we want lights at the tennis court, and here's why we want lights. You know, are you receptive to that? And you have to find out if the majority of the council is receptive to that. So I don't know if that answers your question, but there's a lot to it.
There's a lot to it, but somebody's got to get this ball rolling.
I was, I was going to ask if they're even called tennis courts anymore. I thought they might be pickleball courts now.
Well, I'm there. They're pickleball.
But I drove by and there was quite a crowd there. So maybe you can get a group of pickleball players to support this idea.
That's where it's coming from. But, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that question. Nine, one, discussion about administrators' goals for the 2021 school year. Carolyn G. Do you have something to say about this?
Hi. Yes, thank you, Patrick. In both the principal and the superintendent's contract, there is a paragraph about goals and objectives. And these are And these are to be set annually, typically at the beginning of the year. With all of the uncertainty of how we were even going to open this school year, the goals and objectives were kind of pushed out till we knew what was going on. This fall, the school committee did start looking at them. And then when it became apparent that there would be two new members, it was tabled until we could start discussions this meeting. So what we are prepared to do is to provide a draft. And what that draft is, is we took last year's goals and objectives and redlined them. So you'll be working with a marked up document of last year's goals to reflect a draft of the, Lori's showing it right now, of the 2021 goals. And as I said, we're prepared to share those prior to the next meeting. And what we've done in the past is we meet an executive session, go over the goals, and then come out and vote on them in open session. So if the chair so directs, we can follow the same procedure or do things a little differently. But that's what we're prepared for.
The chair would like to direct the same procedure.
Okay, so I will provide them to Mariah, who will send them out to the committee for review prior to the meeting, and then we'll set up the executive session.
Thank you. Nine-two, duties and responsibilities of the school committee and the superintendent. Attorney John Anderson, are you prepared for this, Mr. Anderson?
I certainly am.
I bet you are. How are you? Are you in your office today?
I am in my office today. I am not at the farm. I am here. Good evening, everybody. At the beginning of each term, I like to talk to school committees about their powers and duties. And I like to explain the difference between the powers and duties and the roles of the school committee and compare and contrast that to the role and duty of the superintendent. I also think it's important you are required to put in so many hours of continuing education on an annual basis, and what we're doing now also counts towards that. Let me begin by talking about some general legal principles. And that is, is that whenever you serve on a board, be it the school committee, the town council, the, a charity, or, you know, IBM or Facebook, you have two big duties. And one is the, what is known as the duty of care. And the duty of care means that you have to think about what you're doing. You have to come to meetings prepared. You have to read the package before you get to the meeting. The duty of care is that when you make decisions, you make decisions on the basis of evidence, that you're thoughtful about them, and that you use your best judgment when you make a decision. The other duty that you have, no matter what type of board you're on, whether you're on the school committee, again, you know, a board in the nonprofit, or even a board for a profit, for-profit corporation, is that you have a duty of loyalty. And a duty of loyalty is that, once you decided to take a seat on this board, your first obligation on anything that comes before this board is what is in the best interest of the Little Compton School Department. That means when you come to this board, you don't look at things, you know, I'm a Republican, or I'm a Democrat, or I was selected by the people on the left side of the street as opposed to the right side of the street. You have to look at things as what's best for the Little Compton School Department. It means that you have to put your own personal interests inside. So if something comes before the school committee that affects you personally under the ethics rules that you're all subject to from the Rhode Island Ethics Commission, you have to recuse yourself. And we're going to be arranging a presentation from the Rhode Island Ethics Commission that will be sponsored by the school committee. And we're going to invite all the other town officials to that presentation so that everybody can hear the same thing from the Ethics Commission in terms of what you can do and what you can't, what you can't do. Your duty of loyalty also means that you have a duty of confidentiality. As a member of the school committee, from time to time, you will become privy to information about students or employees or negotiation strategies or litigation that belongs to the Little Compton School Department. That information is not your personal information to tell your spouse, to tell your friends, to stand up on the commons and tell the world. That information belongs to the Little Compton School Department. And we're sharing that information with you because you need it to make the best decisions. For example, if we have a student discipline case, well, we're going to talk about your specific duties in a minute, but one of your duties is to hear student discipline cases. And if a family comes to the school committee and says, you know, I, my child was not treated fairly by the school administration, you may learn some very personal information about that child. You know, yeah, my child did X or Y, but my child also has a disability, so that he can't control his impulses. That's not your information to share in the community at large. I'm a big believer in terms of confidentiality in the golden rule. Treat people like you would like to be treated yourself. Now, school committees have some very specific responsibilities. Those responsibilities are set in state law. And I've provided to you the section of the general laws, which is Rhode Island General Law sixteen dash two dash nine, which enumerates your duties. But I want to, before I go through the enumerated duties, I want to give you a very common sense, practical primer on what your most important duties are. Your number one most important duty is that you hire the superintendent. Superintendent is the person who makes the school department run, who is responsible for the day-to-day administration, for the operation of the school department. Your number one job is to hire the superintendent. Your number two job is to set a budget. And whereas the superintendent has a contract for a period of time, so the superintendent's contract is not going to come up every year because the contract is more than one year long. Every year, you set the budget. And in some years, that will be the most important thing to do. The budget is the purse strings. And you people are the persons to set, who set the guardrails for the superintendent, the principal, the knowledge and director, for the finance director. You set the guardrails. Mr. McNamee has just gone over the budget and how you're doing, where you're coming in under budget, where he's concerned that you might come in over budget. Setting the budget and keeping track of the budget over the course of the year is the second biggest responsibility. And in this year, for example, it will be your biggest responsibility. The next responsibility that you have, and again, this is where you set guardrails, is that you are responsible for making policies. Several of you were pointed tonight to the policy subcommittee. The policy subcommittee is an extremely important subcommittee. The policy subcommittee recommends to the full school committee all of the policies, the guardrails, the rules that the superintendent, the principal, the teachers, and the students must follow. The policy committee, for example, reviews the student discipline code. The policy committee spent hours last year writing policies in terms of who gets to use the gym and under what circumstances. The policy committee sets policies with regard to student dress codes. There's all sorts of things that come to the policy committee from time to time. We have, we have personnel policies that guide the superintendent in terms of how the hiring process works. So on my, on my list of important duties, I would put setting policies as number three. I'll put in, in fourth place, you are responsible for approving collective bargaining agreements. Collective bargaining agreements are the terms and conditions by which we employ groups of people. We have two collective bargaining agreements here in Little Compton, one with the teachers and one with the employee support personnel. And those contracts come up periodically. We just finished the negotiations for the teachers, and the teachers now are in the middle of a contract, so that won't come up for the remainder of this year or next year. But on the other hand, and we also have a contract with our employee support personnel that we negotiate. Number five on my list is, and fortunately, for Little Compton, we haven't really had to do it. I can think of only one case, but the one case we had was a very difficult case. We hear appeals. And when you hear, when I say we, you, you hear the appeals. Typically, I'm the person representing the administration in those appeals. But if an employee is unhappy by the way that they have been treated by the administration, for example, if an employee feels that we have violated their rights under the contract, or if a student's family, a parent, feels that the administration has not properly handled a student matter, the parents or the employee have a right to come to the school committee and ask the school committee to review the actions of the superintendent or the principal. That does not happen very often in Little Compton. We had one case last year, though, and the one case we had last year, you know, we, we had to, we spent an hour, an hour, an hour and a half with, with one family, listening to some of their concerns about the way that the administration handled a matter. And the school committee reviewed it and decided they were very satisfied with the way that the administration had handled it. But nonetheless, they, the parents, we have to listen to their concerns. So those are the, as a practical matter, the responsibilities of the school committee. If you look at the handout material that I provided you, section sixteen two dash nine basically puts what I just talked about in nice legal terms. If you look at it, there's, it's a laundry list. The school committee is responsible, for example, is, has the entire care control and management of the public school interests. The school committee identifies educational needs. The school committee develops policies. The school committee makes sure that laws are followed. The school committee evaluates performance. You just talked about, you know, the superintendent's goal setting. The school committee is responsible for the employees and employee and student discipline. They're responsible for planning. The school committee is responsible for a bud, for the budget. They're responsible for adopting changes to the budget. If Mr. McNamee comes to you and says, you know, something dramatic has happened. We've had three kids from Little Compton who we've had, who have been, for one reason or another, had to be placed out of district. That's really expensive. Depending on the circumstances, one child could cost the district a hundred twenty five thousand dollars. If that were to happen in this district, because you're so small, a hundred twenty five thousand dollars is more than a teacher's salary, even with benefits. Mr. McNamee would have to perhaps rearrange some things in the budget and cut some areas to make it up to pay that tuition. You have to keep track. It's your responsibility to keep track of the budget. You need to remember that the administration, that is the superintendent, works for you. I work for you as your attorney. Mariah, as your clerk, works for you. Ultimately, though, you are responsible for the, for the decision-making. Now, the second thing that I gave, provided you from the general laws, is sixteen dash two dash nine point one. The sixteen dash two dash nine point one requires the school department to adopt a code of basic management principles. And the statute lays out what those principles are. And again, it's frankly another way of saying what we, what we've been talking about so far this evening. That is, you are a policy group. You are a big picture group. You set the guardrails. But by setting the guardrails, it's not your job to drive the car. Driving the car is the superintendent's job. The operation of the school system, that is, for example, hiring, that, the power to hire belongs to the superintendent. You can set policies for the superintendent. For example, we're not going to discriminate against people on the basis, which is a policy that we have, on the basis of their member, membership in a protected class. You can set policies for the principal, for the superintendent in terms of, you know, we will interview at least so many people for positions. You can set policies for the superintendent saying that this is the salary range that we will hire people into. But the actual decision of, do I hire Mary Smith or Bob Johnson to be the fourth grade teacher? That decision rests in the superintendent of schools. It is not the school committee's responsibility. Again, you set the guardrails, but the superintendent drives the car. The last document that I provided you are the duties of the superintendent. And this is exactly how the superintendent does, drives the car. I've talked a lot about policies. You make the policies. You write the policies. As I said, the policy subcommittee makes recommendations to the full school committee. And I'm going to guarantee you now, the policy subcommittee is, you know, they're, that's the subcommittee that frankly takes the most time. And their recommendations have to be approved by the full school committee. But once the full school committee approves a policy, you know, we have a policy, for example, that right now, you have to wear a mask in school. That is a policy that the school committee has adopted as part of our dress code. The person who's responsible for carrying out that policy is the superintendent. Superintendent can direct the principal to do it. The superintendent can direct the, direct human resources manager to do it. The superintendent can direct the school attorney to do it. But the person who is responsible for carrying out that policy is the superintendent. Superintendent also is responsible for recommending to you new policies. And from time to time, the superintendent does that based on developments. For example, the superintendent said in August, we need a face mask policy. And there was a discussion about, well, where, how do we do this? What's the best way to do it? And where I come into the picture, as I pointed out, we have certain rules about the fact that you have to wear clothes to school. You have to wear clothes to work. So adding a face mask to the clothes that you have to wear to school is just one more logical extension of it. So we decided, or I recommended, and the board decided to put it into the, the student dress code. The superintendent is responsible for making sure that laws are followed. For example, we are responsible for providing children with disabilities a free, appropriate public education. Even if we, for, go to distance learning, for example, I am advising school committees that they have very specific responsibility, superintendents, that they have specific responsibilities for children with disabilities that may not be able to be delivered through virtual learning. I don't, you know, it's pretty hard to do physical therapy, for example, through virtual learning. And we provide physical therapy to certain students. If that's the case, we may have to continue to provide some in, in-school services like that. It's the superintendent's job to make sure that those laws are followed. The superintendent is responsible for choosing the principal. Not just teachers, not just custodians or clerks or teacher assistants. The superintendent picks the principal. The superintendent is also responsible for The superintendent is also responsible for carrying out the personnel function. For example, we have teachers who will say, gee, I'm going to have a baby. I'd like to have a leave, take a leave of absence. A lot of these personnel matters used to come to the school committee. The school committee would vote on giving, you know, Ms. McGillicuddy a leave of absence so she could have a baby. That does not happen anymore in two, in nineteen, 2019, effective January first, 2020. Huge amount of the personnel function got transferred to this, away from the school committee, to the superintendent. The thought behind that was the school committee should focus on budget and policy. And the day to day stuff such as, you know, gee, Ms. McGillicuddy, when do you think you're going to go out? How many weeks do you think you're going to be out? And all of those details are best handled by the superintendent on a day to day basis. The superintendent is responsible for signing off on purchases. The superintendent is responsible for keeping you informed about the budget. And you got a taste of that tonight. The soup, it's the superintendent's responsibility to make sure that Mr. McNamee reports to you. It's actually not Mr. McNamee's responsibility, it's the superintendent. Basically, if it happens in the schools, it's the superintendent's responsibility. That means that if you have a problem or a concern, gee, I walked into the school and nobody was wearing their masks. The person that you need to bring that to is the superintendent. It's not your role as the school committee to walk up to, you know, the ninth grade teacher and say, you know, put your mask on. That's the superintendent's responsibility, and she may assign that responsibility to, to print, and here in Little Compton, to Ms. Whip, the, the principal. If you have a concern, gee, why are the reading scores such a problem in this particular classroom? Or we, a, an, an actual Little Compton problem? Why can't we find a substitute? We've had, we spent a lot of time on a substitute policy, and why can't we find a substitute? Those concerns go to the superintendent. It is not your role as a school committee to manage the, the day to day operations of this, of this district. If the superintendent doesn't answer your questions, my advice is first to speak to the chair and let the chair know that, gee, I'm asking for some information, I'm not getting it. If there is a process that if you wish to have an item put on the agenda, you can also contact the chair. But in the first instance, if you have a problem and, you know, I, I, the superintendent has a very good open door. Theoretically, she works only three days a week. I talked to her, you know, during COVID, I talked to her like six or seven days a week. You know, she is very accommodating and very reasonable. You may not always like her answers. You know, sometimes we've had some, you know, we've had some challenging conversations. But in school committee, in public, we've had some challenging conversations in executive session. But, you know, the schools, the superintendent is always open, and that should be your first stop for additional information. We have on the agenda the opportunity to add items. We have the opportunity to ask me as your attorney questions. I need to make it very clear, and I, I, I'm not at the individual attorney for five individual members. I'm the attorney for the body. And to the extent that you have issues that you're concerned about, that you want to get to me, I would ask you funnel them through either the chair or the superintendent. You can also, though, at that point in the meeting later tonight, say, gee, I'd like to get, you know, the attorney or the administration to look into something. And, you know, if the majority of the board wants us to do that, we will do that. Does anybody have any questions in sort of this sort of school committee cram course 101?
I do not, I'm good right now. If we do have a question, you want us to funnel it through the chair or through the superintendent prior going to you? Is that what you're asking?
That's what, that, that is what I'm asked, that is what I'm asking, yeah. I am ass, I am asking that because again, I'm going to be as a very practical matter. And by the way, just so you all know, I served for 11 years on a school committee. I was on the Pawtucket School Committee from ninety-two to 2003. So I've been on the committee. I will tell you, Mike, the reason why I do that, and I'm not directing that at anybody on the Little Compton School Committee, but I have seen on school committees where some people start thinking that the school committee's attorney is their private attorney. And, you know, I get asked a lot of questions that are really not school committee concerns, or they are town politic concerns. And, and again, I have not had this problem in Little Compton, but I have had it elsewhere. When I was on the Pawtucket School Committee, we had one member who ran up a huge bill for the school district because he talked to the lawyer, he talked to the lawyer every week and nobody was, you know, monitoring the bill. And then they got a huge, they finally got a huge bill and everybody was like, what's going on here?
No, I, I think that's fine, funneling it to, to the top is not a problem.
Okay, no, I, I just, I, I want you to under, I want you to understand, you know, why. I mean, I also view, let me make it also clear that I view my job to be proactive. That is, you know, if I see the school committee walking into a pothole, I'm going to say, there's a pothole in front of you. One of the things that I do from time to time that I'm sure annoys the chair is that if the Congress, if the meeting goes off topic, we are subject to the open meetings law, we are going to have a presentation from you from the Attorney General's Office sometime after the first of the year. I will sometimes say to the chair, you need to bring it back. You know, this is not, it's not on the agenda to talk about the after school program tonight. You know, we're here to talk, you know, it's just not on the agenda, we can't talk about that. So that's sometimes where I can, you know, make people unhappy, but it, that's where I will step in to try to bring everyone, you know, to keep people out of, out of trouble.
So just can you clarify one thing? So as far as future agendas, since you brought that up, you have in this, it's eleven point two, I'm sorry, it's the wrong one, sorry, it's eleven point three. For my administration or legal counsel. And there's also a section for just the public input. All right, so if we want to add something to the, to the upcoming agenda, we can go through the chair? Or can we request it under what section at this point?
Eleven, eleven point three, public comment is for the public to speak. That is, you know, for the public to get up and talk about whatever they would like. And the role of the school committee is to listen. It's not to start a debate, you know, if somebody gets up and said they don't like what's being served at lunch. It's not a debate for lunch, it's just for the public to let you know, we're not happy about what's going on, you know, what's happening in, at lunch. On the other hand, eleven point three is where you will make a request of the rest of the committee to study, to look at a particular issue. I'll give you an example of a controversial one that I've been asked by a different school district. And that is, is that I have been asked to look at their mindfulness program. Because there are some concerns about the mindfulness curriculum. And so I was asked by the school committee and they took a vote and a majority have been voted to ask me to look into the legal issues of their mindfulness program. So I'm going to, you know, I have, I'm getting ready to do a presentation. You can alternate, tune into Chavo when that happens. It's the same with you, from time to time, somebody will say, I want, you know, I'd like the superintendent to give a report on what she thinks the enrollment is going to be next September. And so forth. The reason we do that this way is, again, to make it clear that whether it's myself or Ms. Sedgwick or Mr. McNamee, is that we work for the group. We, we're not, you know, you are part of a group now, you're not individuals. And it's the group that speaks, if the group votes for us to do something, we do it. Holly?
Just, just to clarify, but if, if someone wanted, they wanted to know like the health curriculum and they wanted that on the agenda for next month. And you don't, it's, it doesn't require a whole lot of time from the superintendent or the lawyer in between now and then, you just want to see the health curriculum at the school committee meeting. You could just shoot Patrick an email before the agenda.
Yeah, the chair, one of the thing, responsibilities of the chair is the chair sets the agenda. And your current chairman, who has been the chairman for the last several years, you know, has been, he, he meets a few days beforehand with the clerk and with the superintendent. There are some standard items, as you can see, like the consent agenda, like, you know, items for the law, for the attorney or for the administration, the finance director's report. The chair works though with the superintendent to put together the agenda. I think that, you know, my experience or my observation is that Patrick has been very reasonable when people have asked for things. On the other hand, if, you know, people ask for, and I've had this problem in another district recently, where, you know, people wanted 10 different things on the agenda. The meetings were running till 11 o'clock on a regular basis and the chairman started saying, no, this is not going on the next agenda, it's going to have to wait. So the chair can add things to the agenda. But on the other hand, if you want to add something to the agenda and you don't feel the chair is listening to you, or you want to let the public know that you think that the health curriculum is really important, the time to bring that up is on eleven point three.
John, are you at the end of your discussion now?
Yes.
Are you sure?
Yes.
I just want to, I just wrote a few, a couple of things down for our new members. And you've already, I just want to reiterate it, John works for the five of us. Doesn't work for the superintendent, doesn't work for Carolyn or TG, works for us. Obviously as a group, not individually. The other thing I've got, the budget wise, we can move money from any account or any, anything you see there, we can move it around. As the town is different, they have to stay in their lanes, they, they, they can't move accounts from one to another. So there's a difference there. So we can, when John was talking about, if something comes up, Macnamee has to find some money to do it. Maybe you're wondering, well, where's he find that money? He can take it from anywhere. I don't know, anywhere, John, but pretty much anywhere on, in the budget, am I right on that?
Yeah, that's correct, that's correct. So we, we have the ability, but generally what I'll do is I'll present that to the school committee as to the fiscal impact of any of those decisions and show the committee where the funding is coming from. Just like we do when we do the collective bargaining agreement. I'll come up with the fiscal impact on the budget for the decisions that are made through the collective bargaining agreement.
And just to clarify, if somebody, if, if you guys are kind of asking, I think Polly might have been, Mike, if somebody wants to put something on the agenda, and how does a public put something on the agenda? You know, they can certainly contact me, they can come to a meeting. They can call the school. And that will get to, to me, and then we can discuss with the superintendent whether to put it on. As a school committee member, you can, you can contact me also. Or like you say, eleven point three, you can talk about it then and we can vote on it. And the reason why eleven three is there is because if a school committee wants, a member wants to ask for something and it's going to take time, and we know time is money, and we have to pay the attorney, or we have to pay John McNamee, then the school committee, the five of us have to say, okay, do we want to spend the money to have this data for our next meeting? That's why eleven three is there. So anyway, I just wanted to bring those three up. There's something else here, but I can't read my writing, so. Oh yeah, Jonathan, Jonathan, go ahead, why don't you say that, Jonathan's got one.
So you guys have been provided with a Little Compton email address. And I believe both of our new members at this point have picked up their Chromebook for existing members, Polly and Rita. Patrick will probably grab this today, I will send you an email and we'll go over some instructions to deal with that. But you guys have been issued a Little Compton School Department email address, and for obvious reasons, probably. I just want to say it. Any district communication should be done through that email address, both to protect the district and yourself. I would greatly recommend if you have people reaching out to you through other channels to redirect them to that. One other thing, I, actually, I won't mention that, that, that's in the email too. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan, I just read my thing here. When, when, when John, when John talked about something that's not on the agenda and we start getting away from what's on the agenda, and we can get an open meetings violation. So that, the reasoning is, is when people come to a meeting virtually or in person, we used to have an in person, and people start, and, and we start to talk about stuff that's not on the agenda, they're like, wow, if I would have known you were going to talk about that, I would have went to your meeting. So that's why we would get an old meetings violation. So we have to stick to what's on the agenda. Anybody else with anything, any other questions?
Not a question, Patrick, but I just want to confirm that our new members received the invitation from Bryant University for the training, the continuing professional education for newly elected leaders. Friday, January eighth and Saturday, Saturday, January ninth.
I have, and I've registered for it.
Oh, great.
Yes, I have that.
Great, yeah, it's good, we went a couple of years ago, I'll go to it again, it's good stuff.
It's good. All right, thank you, John Anderson. Appreciate it. We're at public input now, ten, public input. If the public has anything they have to say, it's the officially your time to say anything, any hands up, Mariah will tell me if there's any hands up. And if there are no hands up and you think of something before the meeting ends, put your hand up and we will get to you. Action items, eleven point one. Consider discussing vote to approve the disposal of school property, property, property. Be a roll call, and I'm going to let Jonathan tell us what this property is.
So we have a short list here of a couple of different things, I can actually.
Jonathan, excuse me, it's hard to hear you.
We are, we are over six feet away, by the way, if anyone's wondering.
Is that better? Can you hear me? Okay. So we have some stuff that is broken or very, very old. Approximately six desktop inkjet printers, some mismatching laptop cases, four battery backups, service size power supply, some document cameras, a dehumidifier and a fold up table. Those things are beyond salvage value and, and have no use anymore or are completely broken. We also have some assets that we're going to submit for buyback, so these are old and beyond their useful life. But we are going to submitting, be submitting all of these to see if we can get any credit back to turn that into money available for new technology or, or maybe some other programs. So we are looking at four Windows laptops that are between 10 and 14 years old, 17 desktop computers from 2006 to 2012, 12 old air, Apple airport wireless routers and 149 iPads between the second and third generation for both of those, and those were the ones that were recently replaced just before I got here with iPad sixes. So again, those, we, we don't have numbers back yet, but any of those will be submitted. Usually we'll get for, for something that old, maybe, maybe between 10, $15 an iPad, something along those lines. But we're not just going to recycle them, we are going to try to reclaim any value that was left out of those. It'd be nice to get them out of the server room.
Thanks, Jonathan. Do I have a motion to approve the disposal of school property?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second, uh.
Have a second, any further discussion on these hot items? Good, what do you got, a 2006 iPad over there? I'll give you five bucks for it. No discussion, vote for a roll call, please.
Polly?
Aye.
Rita Kenahan?
Aye.
Mike Rocha?
Aye.
Hannah Eya?
Aye.
Patrick McQ?
Aye, passes unanimously. Thanks, Jonathan. Eleven point two, consider discuss a vote to approve Little Compton School LED Eleven point two, consider discussing vote to approve Little Compton School LED lighting project via roll call. Can someone uh, tell me, uh, uh, can I get a motion to approve Little Compton School LD lighting project?
John McNamee would like to speak to it.
Can I get a motion for us?
You have a motion, Patrick.
Second.
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 We got a second, John McNamee, go ahead, we're in discussion.
Okay, over the uh, but when we first did the renovation on the high school project, uh, excuse me, on the uh, Wilbur McMahon School Project uh, back in two thousand and fourteen, the engineers had projected we would use a certain kilowatt hours, a number of kilowatt hours and we've exceeded that by probably three times. So I've been trying to get a handle on energy costs. Um, we are still looking into going into a net metering agreement with the town to um, to use a, a green energy product, project that should save us probably in the neighborhood of, of thirty to forty percent on our electric bill. Uh, we had started that process uh, pre-pandemic and uh, in fact, they did talk to the town administrator today and we're looking to hopefully resurrect that after the first of the year in order to uh, see what we can do to kind of control these energy costs. Right now, our electric is costing us a budgeted for FY twenty-one is about eighty-four thousand dollars a year. So it's, it, it's a big number. Uh, what this project is going to do is going to convert, uh, all our, there's probably six hundred plus fixtures uh, to LED lighting, which will be uh, very energy efficient, longer lives. So we're not looking at buying light bulbs, replacing uh, fluorescent uh, bulbs and fixtures. So there's a, there's a substantial savings in on that. And what the National Grid does is they provide us with a rebate. In this case, the total project for doing all this work is about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand of which uh, thirty-four, six forty is going to be rebated off the top with National Grid uh, giving us a net cost of about ninety-two thousand. And what the grid is going to do is finance that interest three over, interest free over five years uh, through our electric bill. And they're projecting that the energy savings will equal the amount of the uh, cost per month. So uh, over the five year period, we'll have uh, a payback on converting these uh, uh, LED fixtures. Some of the other benefits, for example, uh, they're going to put fixtures in the gym which will be uh, able to be controlled, um, through an app. So we're not going to have to deal with lights going on and off during events. Uh, we'll be able to control those remotely through the app. Uh, they're also going to be looking at the exterior lighting and uh, uh, doing some things out there which I, I think will provide uh, more lighting and, and clearly at a, a lower cost. Um, the town, the town is also doing a, a similar project, uh, theirs is on a much smaller scale than ours. But uh, uh, it, it is certainly, I think, a, a, a win-win uh, for the uh, for the district uh, to uh, to do this conversion. I don't know if there's any questions or.
Yeah, and, and, oh, my, my, I'm good. Any, any questions? We're in discussion.
John, I got a question for you on this, so with this program, I mean, I read over your report and I, I read basically all things, everything in detail. Is there anything tying us, because this is a National Grid program, incorrect? And this, they're the ones that are... So is there anything tying us to National Grid as far as the supplier in the long haul, if we go with this program?
Uh, no, in fact, we don't use National Grid to supply our electricity right now. We, we go through uh, Constellation out of Boston, it's a, it's a contract that we have jointly with the town. And uh, every three years, we, we take a look at that and we'll bid that out. So actually, the grid has really gotten out of the supply side of it. Um, and they pref- they probably prefer not to supply the electricity. So it doesn't really tie us in to them in terms of uh, the electric uh, supply. They have obviously delivered the electricity um, uh, because they have a monopoly on that. But, but in terms of the purchase of power, we have a lot of options available for that.
Okay.
Yep.
Any further discussion on this?
No, but I'm really glad to hear that lighting is continued to be talked about.
Yes. That's right. Uh, roll call, vote please.
Polly Allen?
Aye.
Rita Kenahan?
Aye.
Mike Rocha?
Aye.
Anna Aya?
Aye.
Patrick McQ?
Aye. Get that passage, you name it, eleven three. Consider discussing vote to approve any requests for information for administration and or legal counsel via roll call. Do we have anything for our professionals? I don't see any. And John Anderson, before I adjourn, I, I don't, I don't think I heard you talk about a rolling quorum in your discussion uh, today.
Oh, sure, sure, I, I, I'm happy to address that very briefly. We, we're going to have a presentation um, from you, from the Attorney General's Office on the Open Meetings Act, but one thing I will make you aware of right now so that um, you don't step into a pothole is the fact that um, when um, with regard to any public business, um, if you even outside of a school committee meeting, talk with two other members of the school committee. So for example, hypothetically, Patrick speaks to Rita and then Rita speaks to Mike. Um, and I'm reading people off my screen as they came up. That just made a quorum of the school committee um, in terms of deciding any business of uh, that affects the Little Compton School Department. So if you're going to talk, um, you know, among yourselves, you've got to remember that you cannot talk to a quorum. And since you're a very small school committee, you're only five people, a quorum is three. So if you find yourself talking with more than one other person on the school committee about school committee business outside of the school committee, you're going to fi- you're going to run afoul of the open meetings law. So um, the place to talk about school committee business is here um, uh, at school committee meetings. Or if you have particular questions, you know, talk to um, the superintendent or talk to the chair. Um, but school committee business is done at school committee meetings and not elsewhere.
So John, so there's one, you know, when I first got on back a long time ago, uh, you can, as school committee member can give some information or talk with the superintendent who then can disseminate that information to the rest of the committee.
And the answer to that is yes, the school superintendent is not a member of the school committee, nor am I, nor is Mr. McNamee, nor is Mr. Gabriel or Ms. Sedgwick, we're not members, it doesn't apply to us, we don't get in trouble talking to you. The people who get in trouble are the elected officials. So again, if three of you talk about a particular item, whether you do it by all meeting for coffee, um, uh, you know, on Tuesday, on, on Thursday morning after the meeting or as some school committees have been known to do, you all go for drinks after the school committee meeting. And you all start talking about school department business or if, again, Rita calls Mike, Mike calls Polly. That is a um, violation of the open meetings law and I'm very proud of the fact that we have not had a violation of the open meetings law as far, you know, I've been doing uh, Little Compton since two thousand and seventeen and I can't remember one in the three years that I've been do- doing it, you know, probably by saying that I jinxed myself. But the school committee has been great about following the law and I hope that you will continue to do that.
So I guess if you want to get some information to the rest of the committee, you tell the superintendent and then she can uh, uh, email us if there's any pertinent information.
The superintendent can co- coordinate the dissemination of, of information. The school superintendent uses her professional judgment as to what needs to happen and what doesn't. But, but the biggest thing I frankly would be if you want something on the agenda, let Patrick know.
All right, I will consider a vote to adjourn, do I have a motion?
No.
You have a motion, I heard something there, do I have a second?
Second.
The uh, vote for a roll call, please, Mariah.
Polly Allen?
Aye.
Rita Kenahan?
Aye.
Mike Rocha?
Aye.
Anna Aya?
Aye.
Patrick McQ?
Aye, so that concludes our meeting. Uh, great job, new members, good seeing the other three, other two members, have a great night.
Congratulations.
Bye now.
Bye, everyone.